Thank you for coming. Take a minute to walk over and sit close as we're going to have the presentation in about two minutes. And there's still refreshments, of course, and some snacks. And what you guys have all been looking at the first half hour has been the work that we've done up to date, a lot of the outreach, the research, and the initial community engagement that we've done in gathering information that would feed the conceptual master plan. In addition, what you've begun to also see is the three alternatives over there, and those are considered full build-out visions. And please understand that, you know, what you see on those boards would take probably fifteen, twenty, thirty years to be implemented. And that a phased approach, a phased approach as part of the final conceptual master plan is going to be a critical piece to understanding from many sides on how one of the preferred plans could be implemented in a phased approach. So with that, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. And so I will take it away on our presentation here. Thank you for coming, everybody. And this is the Community Town Hall. And so what we're going to do here with this presentation is really
This is more for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Really give you guys an understanding of where we're at, project scope, background, and also begin to give you a preview of the three alternatives that will ultimately lead to one preferred conceptual master plan. And with the project description and background, to give you an understanding of where this all started. You know, our purpose here was to develop a comprehensive civic center master plan that had obviously a clear vision and an action plan, financial strategy, and timeline. And that's an important piece to understand, is that what we do here, we have an economist on board. And so what we do here will be, you know, will be able to be implemented. We're going to give the city the financial tools to understand how it can be done in the next, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now. We are here to also meet the city's administration, administrative and operational needs for them to be able to deliver their civic resources to the community in an efficient manner. And also meet the needs of the community, what the community would like to see in a reimagined, re-envisioned civic center. Right now, in terms of status, there's three phases to the project. Phase one deals with existing conditions, analysis, and stakeholder engagement. Phase two is the development of the draft design alternatives, which you have been seeing in the rear of the room back there. And we are at the end of both of those phases. So what you see here under deliverable, we are at the stage where we're beginning to finalize the needs assessment from a programmatic standpoint, how much of this versus how much of that for not only potentially a new city hall for the administrational needs, but other civic uses such as how much square footage for retail, for a cafe, for a sandwich shop, those kinds of things that we've been told from the community at the four pop-up events that we've done that they'd love to see in their civic center. So we are at this stage here, kind of between outreach and deliverable here, what you see here. And this is still kind of a live document, what you see. Everything you see up there is still live for feedback and for us to absorb it and integrate it into a final preferred conceptual master plan. And then the final phase three, which will happen in the next month or so, that process is the beginning of that preferred plan. And with that attached, a financial strategies report and also a phasing strategy, how could it be phased out? As opposed to, you know, what you see there, everything wouldn't happen at once, of course, from what you see at the boards. So a little bit about the project scope. So what is within our parameters, right? You know, the project scope, we're dealing with a civic center that was completed, of course, in nineteen seventies. You know, parcels that are defined, as you saw on some of the boards over there, over fifteen acres, but also includes the Public Works Service Center that you see next to Via Park. So here, what you see on the left side is the civic center area. So everything in yellow is, you see, a city-owned property. What you see in the red, in the red dash line is the primary civic site and other related civic uses you see kind of in an orange outline. Black circles are the actual buildings within our scope. What you see in blue circles are parking lots, surface parking lots within our scope, and also some open space that is within the civic center that we've identified. And here on the right side is the Public Works Service Center, here with the building, all the maintenance facilities, and the parking-facing Schaefer Avenue. And of course, then, we go into now background. So, you know, how did we get to this point? Or what informed the alternatives, as you saw, some of the diagrams up there? You know, it began in two thousand and nineteen in May where City Council gave directive to, for the civic center to stay in downtown Chino. There were alternatives discussed, of course, which are actually, you know, shown on all the three alternatives back that you saw on those boards in terms of renovating existing city hall, building a new city hall in the civic center, constructing a new civic city hall across the street from Central Avenue where the old fire station and family services building are right now. And there are various factors that are, you know, under consideration as we do these studies that include cost, the age of buildings, operational and functional issues, and of course aesthetics and character as some of them. Also formulating a vision of the civic center, that was a very critical piece in the early stage of the project. You know, how do we define the civic center's role in the community? You know, informing the recommendations of programming in the design alternatives. It was very critical when we had the stakeholder interviews, which are coming up in a second here, but to really understand how the community views the civic center and what they feel works and doesn't work, what they'd like to see and what they don't like to see. So that was a critical component of us understanding and formulating a vision and a set of goals and principles that you will see in a second. And of course, oops, sorry about that, of course, developing number five, a conceptual plan for long-term site development. And of course, that's going to go to the upcoming financial strategies and phasing strategy, a part of the project that's still upcoming further down the road. And lastly, providing foundation for a timeline that includes, as mentioned, funding and phasing and construction. So with that, you know, we're taking all this directive and part of our scope and trying to formulate now, how did we formulate an approach and get to the stage where we're at to come up with these three design alternatives that you all saw? As I mentioned, the first component was, were the interviews. So we did a comprehensive set of interviews with city council, with city staff and department heads, with the public sector, nonprofit and community groups. And we also teamed up with the Parks Master Plan folks to do the interviews that they were doing that included numerous community organizations. We also piggybacked on their effort to get that meaningful feedback. And questions that we asked, three basic questions that we asked all the groups really is, you know, the strengths and weaknesses of the current civic center, what are the opportunities and constraints as they view them, and projected needs and barriers to growth that they have viewed in the civic center. And of course, prioritization of civic center improvements, what kind of improvements they would like to see. And all of this, of course, is going to feed into a programmatic evaluation that we're working on currently. And what I mean by that is really understanding what the numbers are. And so we are working on that right now. We have a cost estimator onboard and also, again, an economist. So for us to understand after these interviews, after folks have told us, we want to see coffee shops, we want to see ice cream shops, but also city departments telling us, we need, you know, more conference space, we need more space to serve the community, more class space, you know, classes for cooking, classes for, you know, for various activities that could serve the community better and more efficiently and within the departments themselves. And so all this feeds into an actual programmatic evaluation that we're working to finalize now, that we've gotten to the point of the three alternatives. And so some of the stakeholder comments that we received, there were numerous, there were pages and pages of stakeholder comments. I think, you know, just for one interview, we easily had about ten pages out of, you know, I'd have to say at least, you know, fifteen interviews. And so these are just some of the more common comments that we received. Some of them that included, in terms of the civic center in downtown, replacing outdated aging buildings, remodeling the existing civic buildings, the agricultural and performing arts traditions of Chino, designing a civic center to be a destination, right, to be, meaning having more kind of a mix of uses, as mentioned, you know, not only, you know, civic resources, but, you know, restaurants and cafes and those kinds of uses. You know, to preserve the pedestrian human scale that currently exists, not only in the streetscapes themselves, but in the size of the buildings that currently exist. And to keep that main street atmosphere with kind of that small-town feel. We felt, we kept hearing that over and over, and we definitely are doing everything to enhance that and preserve that. Daytime and nighttime activities that goes back to, of course, being a destination not only for, as a workplace, but for visitors and for local residents. And so some of these are some of the more common comments that we received. And in terms of city hall needs, of course, numerous as well, just, you know, some of the more common things that we heard, of course, in terms of serving the community, council chambers slash multipurpose room that it could, you know, function and be flexible in both ways. And to allow for a new city hall, however it's done, to be organized in an efficient manner that it allows, you know, efficient delivery of those civic resources within department activity and external to the community. And so our approach, you know, what we did is, number one, we tried to root this, made sure that we root this in a very respectful and respectful way of the existing fabric in downtown Chino. And what you're going to see upcoming is something very fascinating that we discovered about, you know, the history of Chino that I'm sure you all know. But, you know, to really understand what is, you know, how do we begin to define a sense of place for the civic center? And I think we really had to dig deep to understand not only the people that reside here, but where they come from and the traditions of this place. And what that means in a physical sense, you know, the daily experiences that people enjoy in Chino. And so that was very critical to us, and that's what we mean by doing something rooted in a respectful way in the fabric of Chino. That includes public spaces, connections, and kind of an integrated system of streets and buildings that work for all users. To also anchor the continued revitalization of downtown Chino and how we can, you know, utilize integration of retail and access for business and residents. So that's an important component, one that inspires civic pride and identity. And again, going back to, you know, understanding the civic center as being one for the whole city, you know, not just for what, you know, a one-mile radius or what can be walked within five minutes, which is a half a mile, but really understanding the civic center as a destination for everybody in the whole city and how we will define that. You know, and that includes a lot of, a lot of studies in terms of indoor and outdoor organizing principles, the public realm. So not only what we will program, sorry, not what will be programmed from a building standpoint, but it's critical to understand the civic center, how it will be programmed from a public realm standpoint. The streets that exist, the street trees, any public amenities, the civic lawns, you know, how people congregate and gather in the public realm, we see as something that's very vital from, you know, definitely from all the pop-up events that we've been to. Just been an absolutely incredible experience to see that in front of us. So that has been a very critical component. And one that, of course, is going to be supported by the assessment of current and future needs. So from all this, you know, understanding of traditions and the current fabric of the city and the mannerisms of the people that live here, we also have to tie it into real numbers. And so, again, this is, goes back to the programmatic evaluation, what it entails, everything from understanding what current plans are from the general plan, previous plans, you know, there's a Parks and Facilities master plan that's going on currently, understanding our site visits and as builds, understanding the streets. So it's really also a lot of technical work that we're doing to make sure that our vision is tied to something real and something that can be implemented. And this is where the evaluation, the assessment report will come into play. And of course, again, you know, incorporating the priorities and the needs of the community. You know, the outreach plan that we've been, you know, implementing up to this point in identifying who are, you know, who are the key, you know, who are the key organizations, the key people to really, you know, help us inform the plan. Well, obviously, it's been everybody. I mean, that's what we found out. There's not one single organization that has been, you know, less than meaningful. It's been an incredible, you know, ride up to this point to implement an outreach plan that takes into account the input from everybody. And so we've been working, you know, now this is the workshop, but pop-up events, we have a website, Channel Three, of course, and social media to make sure that we are getting that input. It's a huge part of our equation here, including, as you see lastly here, I'm sorry, including a quantitative statistical survey, which will be up on our project website. And you will be able to answer questions relating to what you want to see here in the civic center to confirm what that final conceptual master plan will ultimately be, especially from everything you've seen here. And developing, of course, now, the design alternative. So we're now at a point where we've developed from initial outreach, the three design alternatives that you all have seen. And they have established goals and objectives from a lot of the community input that we've received, from a lot of the coordination that we've done with the city. And that will include various criteria that you all will see in a second, and a range of scenarios and programmatic complexity that we're about to show you here. I'm not going to go through this verbatim, but, you know, these are some of the initial goals and guiding principles that have been a live document for us since the beginning. And they're up on one of those boards. And we, again, we continue to receive input from you all and adjust these goals and principles as we work towards the end product for a final master plan. And it includes such things that we talked about, enhancing the downtown civic center's sense of place, improving the civic buildings to better serve the public, fostering a vibrant downtown atmosphere, really preserving and enhancing Chino's history and agricultural heritage, architecturally and otherwise, establishing downtown areas as a regional arts and recreational hub. And also building upon the civic center's collection, rich collection of assets, a lot of, you know, buildings and fabric here that we see that have a lot of historic value that we've seen, such as, you know, the Gray Building is one example, you know, the Youth Museum. And there's a lot of examples like that all around. And even so much as to say the fabric of the streets, that's historic in a way, because you don't find streets that are connected and that are orthogonal anymore. And so that historic part of the downtown civic center is also something that needs to be identified. And we also looked at, to begin evaluating these design alternatives, we looked at different precedent studies. What other civic centers as comparables can we relate this to? What components could be integrated into this civic center? And tying these comparable studies to the input that we have received from the city and the community. So here you see everything from images of East Los Angeles to La Quinta, open space, building, architectural character, recreational space, all kind of integrated. So these are the kind of images that we've been showing and getting feedback from everybody, including some here you see La Habra City Hall and South San Francisco. So, you know, it's really about understanding indoor and outdoor space and how it all connects and how it creates that setting and that atmosphere for the kind of civic center that you all want. And so from there, we developed this framework. We developed an alternative design framework, and it included a phased approach that allows for the highest integration of that kind of context that we just mentioned, improving the civic facilities for efficiency of public service and connecting residents to quality retail, open space, and jobs. And other factors, as I've been mentioning, as it relates to city services and collaboration among the city departments, and also enhancing the public realm as an initial framework. And there's more to this, but these are some of the framework policies that we've been looking at. And also, there's a set of criteria that is also expansive and much more than these five, but these criteria are what we've used to kind of backcheck these three alternatives that you see up there. So we have an initial overall macro-level framework, and then we use these criteria to kind of go at the micro level in understanding of some of the components that you all are seeing there. And that includes, you know, designing for daytime and nighttime activities. Are we providing the right depth of space in some of those buildings that you're seeing? So it's not just, you know, what you see is not just a block that you see, it's actually measured and make sure that it's something that can be implemented. So if you see a cube there, it has meaning behind it. And that's what these criteria are judging and are measured upon in terms of those three alternatives that you have seen. And includes efficiency of operations for administrational and civic resources, open space network and hierarchy, and other civic identity, and the value, the value of how to, how to really integrate and marry site design with architectural expression. And so that's what I think we're working towards, to really give a sense of place and something that you can call your own and very unique to Chino, because we're not here to do a one-size-fits-all. That's what we're not here to do, and we want to make sure that, you know, these kind of criteria are, you know, blessed by you all and give us a good understanding of what this place would be. And so here, we begin to look at also the history, as I mentioned earlier. You know, this was, I believe, in the nineteen thirties. And so here you see D Street, and that was some of the, I think this building here was the old city hall on D Street here in Seventh. And of course, this is where the civic lawn is right now, where city hall currently is, is this big block. And you can see here, Seventh Street actually went through at that time. And actually, the larger civic green or the larger park was here, Central Park, where currently the Family Services Center is and the fire station is. And so we looked at some of these images, including this aerial image zoomed out, where you begin to see, it's hard to see from probably where you're at, but you begin to see the dots that formed the orchards around here at that time. And you'll see in the alternatives where that kind of comes to life. And of course, the rich traditions here that you see in the bottom right, this image, the rich tradition of gathering in Chino. And so that's something that we saw and that has always, of course, existed in Chino. And we also did diagrammatic studies to get to the point where understanding the alternatives to point out what the civic center assets currently are in terms of the main street, small-town, urban scale, the architectural scale, and also understanding, you know, some components of open space, where the civic green is, where are the components where people gather. And so we've begun to identify those and also where these opportunity sites may exist for such components as mixed use, also to support daytime and nighttime activities, reinforcing community services and performing arts, you know, potentially the continuation of Seventh Street here. So here is just studies that we did to really understand where these components may or may not fit. And of course, we finally get to the alternative concept. So this is concept number one. And, you know, again, I won't go through everything here. This presentation will be available to you all on our project website for you all to kind of go through thoroughly as well. But, you know, I will explain the alternative one concept through this image. And so with alternative concept one, what we did here is basically there's a new city hall. So the current city hall goes away, the courthouse goes away, the police building also goes away. The new city hall is right here, what you see along Chino Avenue. This is central here. So that's a new city hall with the council chambers. This here is a new library and city archives with some mixed use along D Street. And when I say mixed use, of course, is when you have ground-floor retail or coffee shops with, you know, offices above, in some cases could be housing. And there's an, there's expansion to the NAC right here. This is the new senior center. So in this alternative one, we are actually proposing to move the senior center to a new location, which is right here along Chino Avenue and next to city hall with surface parking adjacent to it. And again, we also moved the library to this location. So it forms a kind of civic campus where you get all your civic resources within that campus. And Seventh Street, we are proposing here to punch through from D Street to Chino Avenue. And this civic campus also reaches across the street eastward on Central Avenue. And also that green here, this kind of civic lawn here is also defined by additional community services programming that's attached to the Carolyn Owens Community Center, and also a new mixed-use performing arts center and additional community services programming as well. And also takes in an outdoor amphitheater on this side of Central Avenue, with Central Avenue being also proposed as traffic calming that in certain events on the weekends, Central Avenue between D Street and Chino could be closed down for special events. And that's what you see why we've indicated in orange. And here you see this square, this square-orange coating here as a kind of hardscape square that takes in, you know, some of the orchard fabric that we were seeing in the historic landscape of Chino in the nineteen thirties. And here you see some parking structures at the periphery of the extent of the civic center and some housing that would be on the west side of the transit center, some mixed-use housing to face some of the single-family housing there. And that could be various types of housing, including potential senior housing. And please let me reiterate again that these visions are kind of full-build-out visions that really wouldn't happen until, you know, fifteen or thirty years and more possibly. So what will ultimately happen, once a conceptual, preferred conceptual master plan is chosen, is that we will be attaching a phasing strategy to it and to give a real understanding of how this could be implemented over time. So we're not going to have, you know, two or three parking structures, as you see here, within the next five years, so please don't think that. So these are the basic components of alternative one. Alternative two, alternative two has some similar components, but here is where we keep the current city hall and we keep the current courthouse building, but we remodel it. And that's what you see in these white buildings here. And these other, these other white buildings are existing buildings, just for reference. But, so here is where the existing city hall and this is the courthouse, and we've att- And we've attached both of those buildings as remodels to what you see as this central unifying structure, which is kind of an indoor, outdoor structure for public functions primarily. So you can have, for example, a food hall in there on the weekend where you have, you know, all various types of foods and different public functions in there. And part of it could be also, there could be a multipurpose room that is actually indoor as well. It's a fairly sizable structure, so it could take on, you know, that kind of flexibility. And it attaches itself to the city hall, a new, a new remodeled city hall, but it's the same building and the courthouse as remodeled. And also here, next to the courthouse is the new council chambers, which has that indoor, outdoor integration as well. Next to that, along Chino is the new mixed use performing arts center here. And attached to that is an outdoor amphitheater. So on the west side, this time the amphitheater is on the west side of, of Central Avenue as opposed to the, the previous scheme. And also as, as I think common in all three schemes, you're going to see mixed use being proposed along D Street and along Seventh Street here across from Chaffee College IT Center. And so that's where we'll concentrate a lot of kind of our cafes and restaurants and potentially office above. Of course, this also has expansions to the NAC. Here the senior center and library stay as is, but we do add an expansion to the senior center here. And again, primary locations for parking structures to, to take care of what, the, the parking that has been displaced here and here. And this parking structure would take on a liner that has retail to face Central Avenue. And lastly, across the east, east of Central Avenue, you see this is new mixed use community services programming and the city archives with some housing that phases, that faces the, the neighborhood, the single family neighborhood to the east here along Ninth Street. And so this becomes kind of a community services hub or, or, you know, a small campus for community services with a, a large green to it. And in all cases, we are preserving, as you see these large trees here, we are preserving as many of the existing trees as possible along Central and on the civic green. And the last concept here, we are showing, we are showing city hall actually across the street, fully across the street on the east side of Central Avenue. And with its own civic green behind it, facing the single family neighborhood, a little bit of surface parking, no change to Carolyn Owens or expansions to it. The new performing arts building would be here with a new Seventh Street being punched through as opposed to the last scheme kept the current configuration of the civic block without punching through a new extended Seventh Street. But this one does again, and this would also have a mixed use component to give that daytime and nighttime activity to the performing arts center. Here, this building along Chino Avenue would be new community services programming and city archive building. And of course, along, along D Street here would be new mixed use, as mentioned before. And along Seventh Street would be additional mixed use for retail and, and coffee shops and restaurants and so forth. And some of the other components are very similar. Expansions to the NAC, of course, a lot of recreational need there for expanding the NAC. And as opposed to the last scheme, which had the, I'm sorry, the public, public services center in this scheme that to centralize the staffing and efficiencies for having city hall and public work service center within close proximity. Here we are having housing, housing mixed use as was in alternative one as well. And I think that pretty much wraps it up for the basic components of all three alternatives. And lastly, to, to finish the approach to the project in kind of a stepping stone to next steps, we are now going to take this input, the input that you guys have given us today. There's more pop up, that pop up events that we have to go through, go to and get more, get more input from you all. And we're going to take all that in and come up with a preferred concept master plan that we're going to recommend to council. So we're still, you know, we're still like a month or so away from that, to getting to that point because there is more outreach to be done. But that's where we're headed. And so from the three alternatives, we can take components from each one. It's not that one alternative is going to just move forward and all the components within that alternative is going to move forward. We can still continue to mix and match to come up with that final conceptual master plan that you all want. And we're going to develop cost estimates. We are now engaging our estimator to come up with high level cost estimates for all three of those alternatives and an implementation plan for that final master plan that's going to have that critical piece of the phasing strategy and how this is all implemented in the next, you know, 15 or 30 years or so. And again, as mentioned, the final steps here, as we, you know, finalize programmatic, our programmatic evaluations, we begin to backcheck what we've done up there with the alternatives against the numbers and the cost estimates and our financial strategies, continue to enhance our outreach program to you all with upcoming public events such as the December 11th Christmas Parade that's upcoming that we'll be at. There's going to be a community survey online for you all to take and give us additional feedback on. And continued coordination with the city. And we're going to take all the input from you all, analyze the three alternatives and recommend a final one with the varied components that you all liked. And definitely leave out the ones that you disliked. And finally, the funding and costing is going to be engaged in the next week or two where we get those high level cost estimates and funding strategies finalized as we move towards that phasing strategy. And that's it. Thank you for bearing with me and I appreciate all your time. It's been quite some time working since before COVID. And we had to take a break during COVID, of course, but we appreciate engaging with you all during all the outreach events that we've been through. We've thoroughly enjoyed talking with every one of you. And we thoroughly will enjoy continuing to talk with everyone. And please let us know, continue to let us know what you like and dislike about these alternatives as we work to recommend a final one to council. And we look forward to that continued discussion and debate. Thank you all. And we're going to open it up now to questions. Oh, and I'm sorry, and, and you can make comments on anything you've seen today on our project website, which is heartofchino.com. There's, there's little squareish, squareish business card type things that we've handed out. Leslie's handed out our outreach consultant. And heartofchino.com, you can go to contact us on the project website and you can write in any, any comment you want, give us any feedback you'd like to have. And there will be a survey questionnaire that's going to be on that, on the project website as well. And it, and will it be mailed? I'm sorry, is it going to be mailed as well? So there will be in the near future, that survey was going to be mailed to, for you all to give us that continued meaningful feedback. Thank you so much. And so, and if anybody has any questions, you can come up and ask the question here. Sorry, only because of the camera, the way the cameras are set up. And, and I will, we will take your questions and answer if you, any of you have any questions.
Yes, if you have a question, if you can line up to my, to my left and, and then we'll have you actually be on stage because we are filming this.
And, and please feel free, if anyone, if any of you want to, you know, go back and make any further comments on the boards, please feel free.
Thank you. Senior, you just made a comment about senior housing. And it seems like it might be a good idea to consider senior housing in connection with the senior center. So that's just one of my thoughts. I am not a fan of amphitheaters traditionally, traditional amphitheaters. I'm a huge fan of the city hall civic green, you called it. It works well for everything we've got. So I would prefer to see an amphitheater more of a huge civic green that could be used for concerts and car shows and everything else. Just a thought. I probably missed it. Seventh Street Community Theater, does that stay or go?
Oh, that stays.
Oh, good, good answer. And Chaffee College.
Chaffee, we, we are not proposing anything for Chaffee College at the moment. I think further coordination with the city on what kind of programming can happen in the future and their future needs, I think that discussion still needs to be had. And at the moment, we're not necessarily proposing anything to those buildings.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else like to come up and ask a question?
And also to answer your question for the, for senior housing, in, in our schemes, we have proposed expansions to the senior center and that could potentially be housing as well, senior housing as well, the expansions that we propose.
We have someone coming up to ask a question, but in the meantime, if, if you're shy about coming up on stage, see me and I will write down the question and then I'll read it out loud to Orlando. But you need to see me, so I'll know what the question is.
It's not really a question, it's comments. This isn't really a question, it's comments. On proposal number one, you have the parking structure.
Yeah.
Okay, then you have to cross Seventh Street
Yes.
to get to city hall and to the library. There are two streets basically you have to cross. You're not thinking of the seniors that have to go to the library, the senior center and city hall. You're crossing two streets. It's not conducive for seniors. Now, I won't be here 30 years from now, but other people will.
Sure.
And it's going to be difficult for them to not only cross two streets, but to walk that far from the parking structure to the library, to the senior center.
Sure. And, and I think, yes, you're right. And I think in terms of alternative two and three, I think in alternative one, we have proposed to move the senior center and library on the civic campus itself. So it's merely walking across the lawn for seniors.
But that's quite a distance, if you look at it, from the parking structure. You cross Seventh Street and then you walk over to the library?
Oh, we have, we have various locations for surface parking right next to city hall and right next to any new location for a senior center. We've made sure that there's surface parking right next for, for, for the seniors in those locations.
Okay, I didn't notice that in the concept issue.
It's, and my apologies, sometimes those little surface parking lots can be difficult to see in those renderings and maybe the angle was off, but, but we definitely are very aware of, of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Again, if somebody doesn't want to come up, just see me and I'll write down your question.
Good evening. I wanted to check in with you on the mixed use fine arts facilities.
Yes.
We had talked about items like that in earlier discussions. And I'm wondering what is in the concept phases of this right now, what will be included?
Yeah, the, the programming for, at, at the moment is, is basic in that we are looking at incorporating such, you know, mixed uses into the performing arts facility such as a cafe or restaurant. But the main component of the performing arts use itself is making, make sure that we have enough space for a 200 to 300 seat theater. And attached to that, we have the flexibility in our current programming to take on classrooms and other functional spaces that would support, you know, the performing arts for such a facility. But that, but that also still needs to, a little bit more work.
So classrooms or open spaces where people would be able to meet would be a key item. And also the possibility of a foyer that would be included with that.
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And I noticed on example one, that the building backed up to the amphitheater. So that would include doors that would open up.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I have Larry Schlossberg here, he's our partner in charge.
Well, there's Larry. I recognize you from earlier meetings, sir.
And he is the licensed architect and so he can better answer it than I can.
Thank you very much.
I'm licensed to answer. Yeah, just to expand on the performing arts center a little bit. It's a, when Orlando is referring to it as a mixed use performing arts center, part of that mixed use means it is for musical performances, for drama, for lectures. So multi, multifunction, about a 300 seat auditorium.
Okay.
And then backstage, dressing rooms, scene, scenery, construction facilities, wardrobe, all the items needed to, to have a fully functional performing arts center. It, it winds up being about 25,000 square feet. It's not huge, but appropriate for, for.
For the community.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Do you want to stay? I was trying to hide out.
I know.
Hello, thank you. I was just curious if there was somewhere that it states for the parking structures, like how many levels is proposed?
Yeah, right, right now, what we've included in the, all the alternatives is to be able to make up for the surface parking that has been displaced due to the, due to the alternatives. And also to allow for more than, a bit more than that. So we're looking at potentially four levels. Right now, there are about 937 surface parking lots in all of downtown Chino. And it would take a few parking structures at about three to four levels, including a roof level to, to accommodate that and include more parking for the new uses, like new restaurants or new retail. And so those alternatives are allowing for all of that. But I will say that, you know, we are, we are showing that as a build out vision under current conditions. Further study will need to be had after this master plan to see what the parking demand really is. I mean, we're showing three, two structures primarily on all of them, but it may ultimately be, you know, 20 years from now, the only one structure is needed and maybe only a couple of levels because there's been, there would have been enhancements in other services such as car sharing, you know, maybe there's more bicyclists, you know. And so it knocks down the parking demand. So those studies need to, are, you know, in, for the future. But right now, at least, we are making up for what we're displacing and allowing for more, for the, for the additional uses.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I noticed that we have people going back to the boards and making comments. And I did do a quick, a little walk around and asked if anybody had any more questions. Some people are preferring to put their comments on the comment boards. So we invite everybody to do that, to go back to the comment boards. However, if there's one or two more questions, we're still up here. If anybody would like to come up at this time? No, I don't think so. I'll hand it to you then Orlando and Larry.
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight, as I mentioned. And again, everything you see is still up for grabs. So please let us know what you think, what you like and dislike, whether it's on post-it notes or red and green dots. You know, this is still moving target and we look forward to getting your meaningful feedback as we move towards that final preferred conceptual master plan. So thank you once again and we'll see you at the Christmas parade.